Call to order for a regular meeting of the Saginaw Planning Commission, July 22. May we have the roll call?
Commissioner Blatt.
President.
Commissioner Faust.
President.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Whiting.
Here.
Commissioner Millman.
Here.
Commissioner Moore is absent. Commissioner Nash is absent. Commissioner Orange.
Here.
Commissioner Ossash.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. We all have a copy of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved. Motion approved.
I will.
Okay, it's made two places and seconded. Are there any corrections offered? There are no corrections offered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item is the approval of this evening's agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to make an amendment to the agenda. Under old business, I'd like a discussion on tiny houses.
Let us get a motion to approve the agenda and then ask for amendments.
I'll move that we approve the minutes subject to the amendment with the amendments.
I guess that saves a thing. Is that okay? By acclamation, we are adding an amendment under old business, tiny houses.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved with additions. Next item is new business. I'm going to read our introductory statement. Good evening, I am the chairman of the Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the planning commission. When the petition, special land use or site plan approval request in which you are interested in is called, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellate's presentation, others may comment. The meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to the city council. This is a public hearing. Item. Item is J-25-2837, a public hearing on the Thompson Street vacation from East Genesee to South Fourth Street. The purpose of a public hearing is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the hearing, not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Do we have a presenter?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to at least give you a brief outline. This is the final phase of the site plan review, the site plan review for the expansion of Hunger Solutions, East Side Soup Kitchen, involving expanding onto the property to the south. Required engineering approval as well as approval of the vacation of the street. All the utility companies have been contacted. There are two individual utility companies that are working with the contractor to relocate some utilities and everything else then is set to go. So the recommendation would be to approve or hold the public hearing, approve the proposed vacation, and pass on your recommendations to the city council for adoption.
All right, thank you. Is there any other presentation? Are we, shall proceed to pub-
I just want to say that I've been over there a couple of times just to check out the traffic flow, including at 5:00 today. And at that time, in 10 minutes, there was one car that went through there. My other concern was that there-
If I could, if I could just interject, we're in the public hearing stage at this point, so this isn't time for commission to make comments. This is time for public comment to come up during the public hearing. Once there's a motion on the floor after the public hearing is closed, then that would be the time for the commission to speak.
Thank you. Yes, is there anyone else who wishes to make comment on this petition? We're going to take the staff's recommendation as the presentation. Does anyone wish to speak about this?
Hi, my name is Samantha McKenzie. My home address is 13231 Frost Road, Hemlock, Michigan. And my work address, which seems like my other home, is 940 East Genesee. I'm the president and CEO of Hidden Harvest. We share the Hunger Solution Center with the East Side Soup Kitchen, and we're really thankful that you're entertaining this proposal to close that chunk of Thompson. We have expansion plans to build out our building onto the 1014 East Genesee property that we purchased from the Saginaw County Land Bank. And our project is really needed. We've seen big increases both at the soup kitchen and at Hidden Harvest in the amount of food that we share out to the community. And we have some capacity issues with that increase in need in the community. We also have safety issues. Right now, when we get in a semi-load of food delivered to our building, we unload that on Thompson Street. We put up some road cones and we unload that semi, which usually takes about half an hour in the active roadway with our fork truck. And it'd just be really great to be able to expand our building out and have a loading dock there to unload that food safely and, you know, out of the active street. So just closing the street will be a big improvement for safety for us, for our food donors, and for the guests that are coming to visit the soup kitchen each day as well. So that's what our overall goal is, and thank you so much for entertaining our proposal.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the proposed street vacation? Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? One last time, if there's no one to comment, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Would you like to come forward?
When you say comment, when you say comment, are you doing the comments at the end or not?
No, that is separate. This is on just this proposal for the street vacation at Thompson.
And all others? Or just one time?
Well, no, this is a public hearing on this one proposal. You may come and speak to this proposal. At the end of the meeting, we have a more general public comment on matters that concern the planning commission.
Okay. And a whole? And a whole?
Did you wish to comment on this petition?
I'll wait until the end, sir.
Well, you may comment now.
Well, I mean, but I can only comment one time.
No, once on this issue, and then at the end of the meeting is on any issue that might concern the planning commission. Could be a previous thing we had done or-
Okay, because I'm only due to that one time. Okay, I can't be standing on my tiptoes. Is this, you know, for somebody in justice?
As long as you're close enough, you'll be fine.
Yeah, we'll hear you.
Yes, I am Israel. I am a native of Saginaw. My issue with this plan is that why are you putting these two together regardless of the problems that were said? Because it need to be separated because you have people over here and you have people over there, you know? And it's hard to get around in Saginaw. So now you would have two locations, you know? So all this money building, you know, building a new one to put together, you know, why don't you find another building over there? So many vacant buildings. So the people can have access to get where they need to go, to get the food. Not have it all in one place. And people can't, still can't get to it. You need it separate where they are. If you need another building, get it, there's a lot of buildings over there. Get another building to keep it loose. It needs to be separate so the people can get the food.
Ma'am, can I have your address, please?
I am a native of Saginaw. I've been raised and born.
I just need your address for the record.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the petition? Now I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. I don't think we have discussion on that, do we? No. Then I will ask all those in favor, say aye.
I'm still here to comment to make an amendment.
There needs to be a motion to approve on the table.
Yeah, we're just closing the public hearing part.
Okay, so you're making a motion to approve.
No.
Just to close it.
Just to close the public hearing, then there's a separate motion to approve. We had a little hiccup. So this motion is to close the public hearing portion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. At this point, the commission will consider, and it must be, to approve the Thompson Street vacation from East Genesee to South Fourth Street as recommended. I see nothing in it that's special condition on this one.
I would move we approve the location of Thompson Street from East Genesee Avenue to South Fourth Street.
Supported.
It's been moved and supported. At this time, is there discussion from the commissioners?
If I may, not so much discussion, as I want to point out to the lady who talked. This motion, this effort, is only about vacation of the street. It's not anything to do with the use of the buildings or whether or not the size of the buildings or whether it might need to be another building. It's none of that. It's only about closing off one block of street. That's all it is.
Yeah, but you still want into one unit when you need two units, okay? But unable to get there.
That's not a decision for us. We only are addressing-
But I'm just quoting my opinions, sir.
Fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Faust.
The only other comment I had was, I knew that there was an entrance exit from the hair store across the street on the Thompson Street. And while I was sitting there today, the son of the owner of the hair store drove up and he said that either Hidden Harvest or the soup kitchen had come over and talked to them about the project, and he was more than happy with the outcome.
They have an agreement too. Egress and egress on their side.
I think he said they were going to switch some land around 33rd. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Faust. Anyone else on the commission comment on the motion to approve?
Quick comment.
Commissioner Ossash.
Yeah, I can support this too because it is kind of interesting when you come into these streets. It's, you're right, there's not really any cars that use it. I've actually went down it before and it's better to take Jane Street than to try and come through here. It's a, I don't know who designed this back in the day, but I can support how they're going to reroute traffic. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comment? So, the motion is to approve the petition for J-25-2837, the vacation of Thompson Street from East Genesee to South Fourth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The petition is approved. Under new business, the next item is the rental ordinance overlay discussion. This is at this time not an action item, but we have some discussion points and background staff prepared. I think I'll just ask, any commissioners want to speak to this or do we want to have a presentation from staff?
Yeah, Chair, before we get going into that, we did fail to mention that there was some additional language. We just wanted to put it on the record that there was some additional language added into the draft ordinance. And it was just the reservation of rights for the city with regard to the public utilities.
You're talking about the prior-
Correct, the prior ordinance that was.
Well, the vacation.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that language to put it in?
Is this the section two you're referring to?
Yes, correct.
I wasn't aware. It looked different than what we had.
It's standard language, we just-
And I emailed everybody that as well.
Yeah, in fact-
Then I guess I should move to add that to-
Well-
You don't need to, you're okay with it?
No, simply, our sheet is more of a summary than the ordinance. We're recommending approval of the ordinance.
My apologies, Chair.
It's okay. But yeah, this didn't contain all the ordinance language anyways. We don't have the legal description and everything was not part of our communication.
Well, we'd be getting the usual sheet we have to sign off on this or-
I don't think we do for ordinances because they ultimately go to council for approval.
Right. We're just sending them this.
It's a recommendation essentially.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we are to our next item. Is there anything else to present with what we've received as a written communication?
Oh, rental ordinance overlaying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, so Christina MacGumber, I think many of you have been introduced to her, is the new assistant planner for the city, and she has looked into this quite extensively, talked to the two communities that have adopted these, and she has some sensation.
So I did reach out to East Lansing since that has been in progress for longer. They implemented it back in 2004. And they said that property owners that initiated the overlay process that was successful 20-plus years ago, they're now finding that they're trying to sell their house and the only people who are interested are ones who would like to rent the house out, but they can't because of this district. So it kind of impeded them in the future and they didn't foresee that happening. They also saw more sprawl within the city because the rentals were being pushed outward because they were not able to be in the neighborhoods. They saw controversy between the neighbors, so when the neighbors were going out and getting petitions signed, some neighbors were wondering why a select few were telling them how they could use their property. In addition, there was an affordability concern. Since it is a college town, they were looking at, they needed more student rentals, but they weren't able to have those within those neighborhoods based on this overlay district's restrictions. And then some people within the community were saying that this was modern-day redlining where it was preventing residents in the neighborhood based on income levels and what they could do with their properties. And it created a non-conforming land use. So they have to have staff dedicated to make sure that if these rentals within this zoning district expire with their certificates, that somebody's there to say, no, you can't rent this house out anymore. It's now, comes into conformity because if these rentals are existing and they're kept up to date, they can stay with that non-conforming level. The city of Port Huron back in 2013 implemented this ordinance because they found that they're, they had a high number of rentals and it was causing their neighborhoods to destabilize. When they implemented, they had several neighborhoods attempt to get the petition signed. However, they were never successful, so they actually don't have any residential rental overlay districts within their city. And that is all I have for what those two communities said about the progress of their ordinances.
I guess this is a discussion item, so I don't think there's a rule we have to not- do I have some questions for staff on this thing?
Sure.
Christina, in the East Lansing area where it was implemented, and they have enough time and experience on some of the impacts of it, do you have information about the physical area that this encompassed? And is it one contiguous area or were there spot areas? Is it more than one?
There's 21 different neighborhoods that were restricted. When you look at their map, it's chunks of neighborhoods and they end up being contiguous. Whether or not they were implemented at the same time, I don't know.
And total area or total number of units, housing units impacted?
That I don't know.
Follow-up here. You mentioned that some people have seen then that there's sprawl. East Lansing itself is a very limited thing. Is the sprawl occurring in the general area then, Lansing, the townships around this?
So this person I spoke to was talking specifically to rentals. So the rentals that used to be able to be in the north part of Michigan State's campus, they were essentially, if they weren't kept up as rental units, then they went away. So they're finding that their rentals are actually moving north towards Clinton County.
Bill, you have a question, then I'll get the Commissioner Clark.
Was the, were these that you looked into, was it for rentals, like a rental home, or was it for ADUs, duplexes?
So for the city of Lansing, it was for short-term rentals and long-term rentals. I'm not sure on accessory dwelling units. Port Huron was long-term rent, actually, I don't think Port Huron specified, but I know when we were talking, it was more focused on the long-term rentals.
So I recently was at their neighborhood association meeting. We spoke, this is one of the topics they invited me to come as counsel to talk about.
Who'd they?
The Neighborhood Association.
Northmore.
Northmore.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Northmore in particular. When we look at short-term rentals, Airbnb, that doesn't affect their neighborhood because we already passed ordinance through the council restricting that in the DDA area. So we cannot have to look at that. But I also talked to them about ADUs. And I told them, I said, I'm quite confused because within ADU, you actually have somebody living on the property and your property is, whether it's above in a garage or an accessory dwelling. I said, you've got somebody monitoring what's going on. I said, the problem you have in your neighborhood, as I canvassed that neighborhood last fall, you have a lot of rentals. And so I suggested to them, I said, you might want to look at maybe a moratorium on any other rentals because they are, when you look at the map of their neighborhood, residential versus the rentals, they're over 50% in that neighborhood, which even going back with conversations of past mayor branch, cities can't sustain that kind of neighborhoods with that kind of rental ability. So you start to have issues with, I saw homes not taken care of, gutters falling off the house, grass not mowed, garage doors are not off the hinges and, I mean, it just really brings down the property values because the homes are not being taken care of. And then we as a city don't have enough inspection in our inspections department to actually go out and enforce that because they're doing other building inspections and commercial, you know? So there's this whole thing that spirals, and they kind of understood where I was coming from on that. So where they're going to land on this in the future, I don't know. I'll probably meet with them again next month. They normally invite me every month back to their meeting to kind of listen to concerns and give city updates. So if I can bring something back, I will after I have another conversation with them.
Everything you just said is what the city of Port Huron, why they implemented their overlay district, and they found that the petitions weren't being signed by the landowner or landlords. So they might run into that issue.
Yeah, and then you also look at when you put a moratorium on something, you're addressing a problem in only up to a year.
Correct.
Because then there can be owners' rights of property that come into effect on that too. So it's kind of a catch-22 on this one, I think. If we could enforce more, that might be a solution for us as a city.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you. My inclination is that there's certainly a reason why they're asking for this. And I would second what Commissioner Ossash has noted about the issues that are going on in that neighborhood. They are there and the people have a right to be concerned in that neighborhood. My question is first, how anecdotal was the information you received from Lansing? In other words, was there any statistics showing the comments you made or you received from the person in Lansing that would support that that was any significant comments?
No, they were not tracking that data.
All right, so we don't know if that was an isolated comment here or there or if it was a big issue, correct?
An isolated comment for what?
For the different comments you said that you received about the East Lansing ordinance.
So that was that person, they said, when they went out to talk to the community, that's what they heard from the community members.
Right.
So it wasn't a personal opinion.
No, no, I understand. My question is whether or not they had, it was 20 people saying one of the issues, another 20, another issue, or just one person saying one or two or three different comments, which really is important to get a better feel for how the Lansing ordinance is operating if majority of people aren't objecting or don't have any major problem and only a few have commented at all. And that's why I'm asking that. If it's strictly anecdotal that that person you talked to got comments from some people and he's telling you, he or she's telling you those comments, that doesn't really help us know whether there's serious opposition now to what they implemented.
Were you talking to East Lansing staff?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I understand that. I mean, but again-
I thought that was important.
Yeah, no, I assumed it was staff. Staff who gathered some comments is what you're relating from that person.
Correct.
That's why I'm asking is, to me, that's anecdotal as opposed to any kind of actual statistical review of how the people feel about it in that community now or in those communities.
So I don't foresee them doing statistics on that. I know that they are going to go back to their zoning ordinance for this overlay district and start amending it. They talked about amending definitions for their family and domicile. And there was another one, they were going to amend, they were going to actually amend it to speak on the short-term and long-term rentals more specifically.
All of which, you know, that's what any ordinance can be reviewed. I'm not very persuaded by comments from Lansing. It's been now 20-some years, it sounds like, that they've implemented and they haven't done anything in the meantime to reverse it, to get rid of it, or even to amend it. So-
It's on the neighborhoods to do that. It's not on that city staff.
Not on the ordinance. That's up to the staff to propose-
Right, but rescinding those overlay districts is on the neighbors, neighborhoods, not on the city staff to rescind those overlay districts.
It's an ordinance, isn't it?
Yes, but for them to rescind that overlay, the neighborhoods have to do that.
I understand, but- I understand, but to get rid of the ordinance allowing it would be Lansing, East Lansing staff or its council.
Correct.
And that hasn't happened, nor has apparently the members of the communities sought to set aside the overlay districts. So I guess, the reason I'm bringing this up is I'm skeptical about how objectionable the overlay district has become. I really have my doubts that it's become bad enough because no one's done anything to get rid of it. And if it was bad, you would think that would have at least been attempted. And it has, there's a lot of good things, and I appreciate the analysis. There's a lot of comments about the advantages of them, and there are a lot of advantages. The Northmore neighborhood certainly would like some of those advantages. But all the challenges seem to be more amorphous, quite frankly. Potential regulatory enforcement, and quite frankly, that's a, that's a tax cap issue. The reason we can't enforce things is we have a tax, two tax caps. They don't let us collect enough money. If we got rid of the tax caps, it would help right off the bat. So I, and I'm not addressing you in any negative way, I'm simply pointing out why I'm skeptical of resistance to the overlay districts. I think there's a lot of potential that can be realized if we had some ability to limit the amount of rentals that are going on in these neighborhoods. Because they are detrimental to neighborhoods, they really are. In my own neighborhood, I've seen it. And I know a lot of other people have seen it in their neighborhoods. So in some manner, I do think the city should try and address that detriment. And this is only one possible way, but it seems like a decent way to try. Well, that's it.
I have a question for council. Correct me if I'm wrong, you have read the specific ordinances.
Do you have any questions for staff?
Excuse me?
Legal counsel. Oh, sorry.
In particular, Christina mentioned a neighborhood will create a petition asking for this overlay. And that sounds like generally the council, city council in East Lansing has approved them as petitioned. But they're creating an ordinance. Amy, in our city, don't we tend to try and have our ordinances applied to the whole city? I can't think of another type of ordinance other than you could say, well, the zoning ordinance says this area is owned this, or this area is owned that. But these are almost like personal private ordinances. I want my eight-square-block neighborhood to have this restriction. And then maybe the next little neighborhood over adds it on. So could you talk a little bit about the actual structure of the ordinances? And if, for instance, who helps create the petition language for a given ordinance? Is the East Lansing planning staff helping groups craft an ordinance that then passes muster? Or is there some private entity that they hire as a group, as a neighborhood association? I don't understand enough about the process to do this.
Well, and Christina can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think you're creating a bunch of separate ordinances. You have an ordinance that creates the structure of how this rental overlay system would work. In creating that ordinance, staff would create templates of things like petitions that would then, just like we have petitions for street vacations and what have you, that would then be taken by a group of citizens for potential completion to create an overlay. And that overlay would create a specific set of substandards, if you will, under the zoning ordinance. So you have your zoning ordinance restrictions, and then creation of this overlay further creates another layer of restrictions in that area.
So the interests of the public as a whole, you have a group, they create a petition to want an overlay for their area. How does the city of East Lansing, to use them as an example, as a whole, say, well, you're just pushing the rental property out into my neighborhood then if you don't have it? You mentioned how sprawl is, the rental properties exist. That is its own supply and demand problem. You're simply saying, not in my neighborhood. But the petition comes from a neighborhood. I don't see where the rest of the city has input into whether that happens or not.
They would have input through the public hearing process on that.
It's kind of like, will a person who lives over here know that this little neighborhood, other than, yes, there's general public notice, but it's not a driving issue for them until they find out, well, this whole area won't let rental housing in, so now I have more rental housing around me. It seems almost like a domino effect. Because you mentioned how a neighborhood will do the petition, and then a contiguous one comes along. And now you've created, it's looked a little like you were indicating sort of a crescent of
Yeah, that's kind of what their map looks like.
The rentals didn't stop, they just went elsewhere.
And that's what staff, city staff for East Lansing said. That that's what indicated what their, everything was moving north for rentals.
Yeah. I'm not sure you addressed the problem in a general sense then, or that the problem was addressed, not you. Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, I want to touch base. It's my understanding you're not eliminating rentals, you're restricting the number of rentals is what the option is. So I don't agree that you are simply moving all rentals out of the district.
It's.
You're not, you might limit how many more can come in.
Yes.
But that's all, you know, there's still.
Only in that area.
Right, exactly.
The rest of the city is.
So if it's 50% rentals now, and you restrict them from going beyond 50, you've still got 50% of your housing rental, which is a pretty high amount.
Only if those rentals stay rentals.
Right.
There are prior nonconforming use.
Right, which I agree.
If at some point someone comes along and uses this as a, as a single-family residence, they cannot then go back to being a rental.
Yeah, which I understand. That would be a potential to reduce it, but it's still not an automatic reduction to say no rentals. That is not what this is about. It's limiting the number.
It's saying no more rentals.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Ostas. Oh, yeah, Commissioner.
Thanks. I am very concerned that the potential residential overlay districts, I think it's well summed up in modern-day redlining, that restricting rentals produces an undue hardship along lines of race or income. And I think that's a very egregious thing to do in the city of Saginaw. I live in Northmore and work hard to preserve its beautiful character. And I would do that as a renter, as a landlord, or as someone who lives there now. And I think that, I hope that we can find ways to hold landlords accountable, as Bill was alluding to earlier. I think that we may have a pathway as a planning commission to ask that staff prioritize enforcement or to find more resources to prioritize enforcement. But I for one don't want to live in a neighborhood or in a city that's prioritizing and allowing for legal methods of reproducing the horrible history of redlining in this country.
Commissioner Ostas.
Yeah, just my own personal observation of the city and the issue that we had with rentals was after the mortgage crisis and a lot of homes became vacant and the property value was down, and the cost of the house was down, we ran into an issue where homes were being purchased on the internet, eBay. We had to get our arms around that as a city as well. So we tried to implement processes where we could control that, and have somebody manage the property or whatever than that. We tried to do our best there. That's a little history on where we've kind of, I think, gotten to know, which I've seen since '08 to 2025. We also took measures in the city to try and control this by rezoning the western, the west side and the east side, both from R2 to R1. We tried measures like that. So I kind of agree that, I think enforcement is our best method forward. Like Commissioner Clark said, our tax cap does hinder us for that. I mean, even right now, if we lift it, just if the dollar cap is lifted, it generates over $500,000, and that's a few bodies of staff we can put on. So I'm not really sure I agree with this. And like I said, I'm looking forward to talking to the neighborhood again, and we can have this further conversation. Because they gave me a list of eight items, and so this was just a portion of my, an hour conversation that we had, so.
And I think it's important to note, staff is not recommending this forward on it.
Exactly, okay, yeah. No, no, but I do, I thank you for all the work. It's really good research that was done, the pros and the cons of these overlays.
I would like to mention two things that I see as, we'll put them in the challenges column. I don't hear that there's any flexibility for what would be known as a rent-to-own situation. A property would be considered a rental, but a portion of their rental cost is going to build up for a down payment. And then it will be bought as a single-family home. But it would technically be a rental. And I can see where that would lead to some of the comments about finding, I can't sell my house. You've taken one flexible way of financing away with this. The other one, you mentioned the lapsing of the certificate for nonconforming use. And we are familiar with this in the city of Saginaw. A family member who technically is the owner of the property passes away. And the property spends a period of time in, shall we say, limbo. Maybe the brother-in-law, the son-in-law comes over, cuts the grass and everything, but nothing has happened. Something like a rental certificate like that is easily going to fall through the cracks. And now, they're ready to sell the property, but that ability to sell it as a rental has gone away. So its value has changed with no one doing anything to lessen it other than the previous certificate holder wasn't able to renew it. So I think there are problems along the way, definitely I would add to the challenge side. Questions?
I have.
Christina, go ahead. Did you have one?
I just wanted to echo, thank you, some of the comments that I've heard here. I looked up the average per family, the median income per household in Saginaw. Per the last census is $37,000 per family, $20,000 per capita. Who can afford to buy? You get what I'm saying? We know that where a renter has these areas, and it's not just because of the tax cap, it's because of the money that the families earn here in the city. And also, as a homeowner, if I don't live in Northmore, but I would take issue with my neighbors or my neighborhood association telling me that when I want to move on from this property, that I can't keep it and rent it and earn income that way and move on. You know, that I have to step, like, my neighbors telling me what I can do with my property. It's a big, there's several, several issues. And I can foresee the same issue that they saw in East Lansing X amount of years from now, when said, I won't say protesters, but the people who are initiating this. When, you know, their spouse dies and they have to go to a nursing home or whatever life changes comes their way, then they're going to be on the other end of it. And I could see this spreading. We've already had the mass exodus from the east side to the west side. Now people are moving out further to other areas like Freeland, which is impacting our population. This is another thing that will do that. So I know this is all research, this is all just for discussion, but I just wanted to give my point of view that I don't think this is a good idea.
Any other commissioners comment? Mr. Faust?
I want to comment on a couple of things. I had read the East Lansing ordinance. And one of the things, to create one of these districts, two-thirds of the property owners had to sign the petition. So, you know, that kind of, it's going to make it hard to create one of those districts. I think as several commissioners have said, I think the biggest way to handle it would be through enforcement. I live right on the edge of Northmore. When I bought my house 15 years ago, the block was almost totally owner-occupied. Now probably two-thirds of them are rentals and the look of the neighborhood has really gone down. So I think it's a matter of enforcing the ordinances that we have and getting people, getting landlords in line. And then at that point, we may not even need an overlay district.
Commissioner Clark, if I may, I know I may be whistling in the wind. But I'm speaking on behalf of homeownership. We are losing private home ownership throughout the city. And to me, that's dangerous and a big concern. Particularly when it's driven in part by whether you call it lack of enforcement and you have deterioration of neighborhoods because the renters aren't being, taking care of their property or whatever the case might be, we're still losing private homes. And I think cities, the backbone of them in general, is the private ownership. They're the ones that have pride in their city. They're the ones that have pride in their neighborhoods. Most renters don't really care because they can come and go. But when you invest in a home, you're paying, whether it's $10,000 or $110,000, doesn't matter. You're still investing in something. So you want to see your city continue to develop and become, or maintain at least, a value. But we're, it's as if we're ignoring that part of it, only to say, well, let everyone rent. Well, that's what I see.
We're not ignoring it. I mean, the economics is the reality of this.
Okay, but.
As your orange has pointed out, the income levels and the values of the homes are not sustainable.
I have two comments to that. First of all, the own, this, the communication itself points out that there are 3,258 vacant housing units in our city right now. You can't tell me that's not a possible rental opportunity. That's a lot of rental opportunities.
But the condition of those homes is poor. And so we're working on developing some housing strategies to try and increase new home ownership, new homes and things of that nature. Versus, and possibly fixing up some of the existing ones, if, you know, if there's opportunities to do that. But the economics of it is the thing that drives that. And there, there's many homes in the city that are privately held that are just not maintained.
Right, but that's a discouragement for private ownership too, because they're either vacant or they're rentals that aren't being maintained, so.
I don't know if that's a problem or you can fix.
Well, it may not be, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is an effort by a neighborhood to preserve their neighborhood. And I respect that. Because that's an important thing for our city, to have neighborhoods try and protect their neighborhoods. The other one, thing I want to point out is, right now, if I remember correctly, the average price of a house, the value of a house, taxable value, is only about $22,000. That's the average throughout the entire city. So, yes, people have trouble affording it, but a lot of them don't want to, they just want to rent. And we're allowing that. The predominant philosophy in our city is that you just The predominant philosophy in our city is that you just can rent. And then if they don't take care of it, then we're the ones that suffer. I want to see the individual homeowner can be able to continue and have a valuable neighborhood that is, that they had a pride in. If we can do something else.
Cultural issue.
Well, in part. Yolanda?
Yeah, thank you so much for the research that you did on this. Just reading this, there's only two places in the state of Michigan that currently has this overlay?
Yes.
Because I was just wondering, like, how are comparables, cities like Saginaw, how they handle their rentals? Have you benchmarked them to see, like, if you don't have an overlay, what do you do as it relates to rentals?
I have not.
Oh, that's, that's beyond the scope of this.
Okay, I just was curious, but thank you so much for the hard work you put into this.
Rachel?
I just want to correct the commissioner's statement about this is the desire of a neighborhood. The Northmore Neighborhood Association regularly has meetings that are between 10 and 15 neighbors. And this is an effort of, I think, two or three of the neighbors who sometimes come to meetings. So I think it's not accurate to represent this as an effort of an entire neighborhood, but an effort of a few neighborhood neighbors within a larger neighborhood association is the situation.
Commissioner Orange?
And to address Commissioner Clark's point about the assessed value, we all know there's a big difference between the assessed taxable value and the market value. It's a huge difference. And that makes all the difference. That's it.
If I may ask, Mr. Galen, go on, I'm sorry. Didn't we, you receive some list of names of those people who were asking for this information or this activity in the neighborhood?
Yeah, they, they did a petition and I don't remember the number of people that signed that petition.
But it was quite a few, if I remember correctly.
The petition is to explore, not to.
Well, I understand, but there, that's, the point is if you're asking.
So I looked into that and when you actually looked at their petition, they had whoever was living in the household. So you could have two signatures for one house. The ordinance for City of East Lansing and City of Port Huron, it was one signature for one house. When you boiled down all of those signatures, it ended up being 14 houses. And I want to say they needed to be about 140 houses.
Okay. How many people? I mean, I understand it's, might be two per household or whatever, but.
So, and then there were four people that didn't even live within that district that they were talking about.
So it's not as many as may, could have been, but it's more than a couple?
Yes, because I thought, I thought the same thing you did.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think everyone has had a chance to chime in here. This is not an action item for us tonight, this is just a discussion. It doesn't need to be an agenda item necessarily, but if the staff develops any other information, you think the commissioners would want? I think we'd all love to see additional information.
And I think we want to afford anything we're talking about in terms of housing development with our, with our plans, we can pass that sort of thing on to you, you know?
I have a feeling we're, in the future, going to be spending more time on different approaches to housing problems because it's a common topic in the development community.
Entire country.
So, well.
Commissioner Milne, I just have one question for staff. If, if, do we have a structure now if someone was to bring a petition to us or would that go straight to council? Where they've created, want to create a district, is there any structure now? So what, what would happen if a group like this came in with an actual map and said, "This is where we want an overlay," what would happen with that?
We'd probably tell them the current ordinance doesn't contemplate it.
We don't have it in our ordinance, but, I mean, again, it would come back to the planning commission to consider as a, as a possibility, but this staff is not recommending it.
Right. I just wondered if there was any structure at the current.
As we do not have a way to address an overlay, it would simply be a straightforward zoning question. And if they're in a R2 or better, or even R1 can be a rental. There's not really an actionable thing there.
Yeah, typically in those sort of situations, we would encourage people to come speak at a meeting during the public input portion and make their requests known so that if there was direction from planning commission or the council to staff, they could make that up the table.
Commissioner Ash, please?
Just some final thoughts. Floyd talked about the taxable value. In the current budget, yes, it was 22,000, untaxable. Commissioner Orange talked about our average home market value, which is 61,000, which rose from 54,000 last year. So we are moving in the right direction. That's just a comment. I also want to leave some thoughts with the fact that the council did, if for future housing, because we're talking about things that are coming. So as you can see right now, the medical diamond is under construction downtown. That is going to create a demand for housing for that neighborhood as well. You're going to have doctors and students and people in student housing. So that's going to, I think organically, we're going to start to see things change. The other thing that the council did too, and I think we should consider and I think the council should consider in the future, is creating neighborhood enterprise zones, which we did in the Covenant neighborhood. So now you see 160 new homes are being built by Covenant Hospital and Habitat is rehabbing about 50 to 60 more, which will create affordable housing in the city. Case point, those homes are $300,000 to build and their market values are 150. So that's a heck of a deal on the home, because I've talked to the people that are doing the project. So if we can concentrate, I think, on some things like that, because those neighborhood enterprise zones create a tax incentive for homeowners. That's like an Oprah for a homeowner as opposed to a commercial property. And so those, those are the things I'd like to focus on and maybe make recommendations to council if we can look at some areas that might, and right now, I think the Cathedral District is an area to look at with the construction of the medical diamond. That could be a great and easy area. Accurate, mhm.
Yeah.
So these are just things that noodle who else have?
Well, I'm going to ask that the discussion come to an end. We have some people here, I think, for our next agenda item, public comment. If you would like to comment to the commission on anything that comes under the commission's purview, please come forward to the mic in the podium and give your name and address.
And I would just remind individuals that there's a three-minute.
Well, since you don't have a clock in here, you're going to let me know when my.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, what I see here is about collaborating with what you guys want to do. And that's bill, 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 you know? Taking in contractors out of town, out of state. Saginaw don't have enough up here to do their own thing, to build. We got to go out of state to find people because, see, real estate is a big business. I know it and you know it. And then they want to come in and they want to be exempt of the taxes. Then who's, who's paying taxes after that? The, the people still got to pay taxes and they don't even know why. So all I see is collaboration. You're going to put some, some houses, some rental stuff, shopping stuff down in the waterfront and some, some, on the end there, you know, a little hoopy, for professional people. Professional people. And, and you're talking about housing, people buying housing. You got all these homeless people, you know, downtown, all in one spot and you're talking about having another one, which y'all trying to do? Put us all in a shelter? See, y'all got your little house up on the hill when y'all leave here, but you're not thinking about the need of the people. It is time. It is time to invest in people. And some little gas stations on Genesee. Who lives down there? Who's going to bring economical wealth? The people that you're trying to replace down, down in those areas, you putting new stuff. And people constantly stealing our houses, our elderly houses. And nothing is being replaced. Nothing is being replaced for the black community. Nothing. So what they going to do is take their dollars and, 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 take their little dollars or their little food stamps and go to the convenience store you going to put down there? You don't even have a grocery store for miles and you talking about a convenience store?
That is time, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I get your address for a minute?
I don't see any unifying nowhere. No organization is in this unit. All y'all do is approve whatever is on the table. You don't investigate, you don't examine, you know? I've been looking for, from afar and I see what you are about. And that is not for the people. How you going to get economical wealth out of those people in the shelters and you got all these little stores?
Can, we need your.
Thank you.
I'm not going to holler my name out on the speaker, ma'am.
We need it for the.
Well, I'll give it to you, but I'm not going to holler my name out on speaker.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend you.
Yeah, you didn't offend me, I'm just letting you know.
Is there anyone else who has comment to make to the commission?
My name is Henry Porterfield. I really wouldn't want to see my address, but I live on Holland at 1006. First of all, may the peace of the Lord be with you all. And I'm not speaking on the things that you were speaking on. Hopefully I'm at the right, at a place that can see what's going on. Well, see if I'm correct. Back in nineteen, back in the 1960s, Saginaw had more than 12 major manufacturers. And most of them had their headquarters here in Saginaw. At that time, a whole lot of people was coming here and they were working together for a common cause. One way, hopefully, I can convince you that it was a great need for that common cause is by saying that we became Saginaw's sister city. And with that, then we'd never have been able to expand or duplicate on that situation. Well, I tried to be creative and think of, hopefully, some type of idea of how we can move forward. One of the ideas I was thinking about was the middle school type of people informing and getting with them and trying to work with them. Now, it's possible that you most certainly will say that that's the school situation, but I wouldn't want to deal with them myself. From the same token is word to mouth. And hence, I would say that you could have a think, think, a think tank of people, young people. And these people would hopefully be asked to come up with a, a way of having at least a five or seven-day operation where people can join together and/or people from other ti, other towns and cities can come to Saginaw. One of the ways I was thinking of is on a third and parter. What would happen if you put, let's say, a flatbed down with tires that you can move down the street? And on that, you could start building a tiny house. Now, myself, I really wouldn't want a tiny house in, in my neighborhood, but sometimes some things that people don't want is real good for others. Now, as you go down the street, you can completely build a tiny house until you get to Washington. You can inspect it, do whatever is necessary, and then do a stage right and go across the railroad tracks, do another stage right and go a block down. To me, that's a jungle area, but politicians would probably say that's work in progress. And start putting tiny houses in that area. Now, two things.
Sir, I'm sorry, that is time. If you can wrap up, you can wrap up your final statement.
Well, it's kind of, two things that I think that could make it a work. The first thing, in Michigan, we have a governor that would be president. And I think that would be a good feather in her hat. The second thing is that as well, we have a representative that want to raise the taxes in Saginaw, which I don't even see that one. But from the same token, he could write a proposal that would say, this, this zone can be a handicap zone for mentally challenged people. And if we can do something like that, then I think we can have an area dedicated in such a manner that we can start helping a growing population of people that's in need. Sometimes we fall, fall down and other times we need help getting up. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission under public comment? Thank you all. We will move on to old business where we added some discussion on tiny houses. Commissioner Faust, would you like to?
The only thing I wanted to add is that we had talked about tiny homes before and I think that it's time that we start moving forward with that ordinance. So what I would like to see under old business every month on the agenda is tiny homes and what progress we're making towards getting an ordinance written.
And I can address that. I mean, I'm nearly done with the report. However, as I've mentioned many times, that affects a lot of the zoning ordinance that we haven't even adopted yet until coming up this Thursday. And so it touches a lot of different points. So if I develop an ordinance, language in there, I have to put every single touch point in that ordinance so that you can adopt it. And so it's going to take some time. So possibly next month I might have something for you.
Something that was thrown out previously is you could do that without touching on all of those areas by creating tiny homes as its own separate topic.
It still touches everything. Because, because it, what it does is it becomes a, let's just say, a planned unit development. And so I would have to create those, the regulations around that planned unit development, how that would work. And then that affects some of the other use standards, parking standards, things of that nature that I have to address. And I, you know, I have to go through and try and think of how that's going to touch things. And so I, I'm working through that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, I just want to make sure that we're still moving forward.
Yep, we are.
Commissioner Clark? I, I appreciate that and would be looking forward to it. I'm not in a rush on it, so I understand you may be more. If there are areas that we could, for example, say, this would be an exception to the 800 or 600 square foot, you could do certain exemptions, that you wouldn't have to address everything, I would think. And if you can't, I, I'll respect that. But I was thinking there must be, might be some areas that by simply noting in the proposed ordinance for tiny houses that it's, it's an exception to other portions, you may be able to do some of that, is one suggestion. The other, it seems to me that I would, my support would be for some kind of a campus-type development. development, like you said, the...
Planned unit.
Yeah, right. So, but I think we should have a limit, a lower and a higher limit on the number of units would be allowed.
And you all gave me some directions on what you wanted, so that's what I'm working on.
All right. Is there also something about a locate, not a location so much as the size of the space where they would be placed?
Well, that's, that's another item, that's a touch point within the zoning ordinance that I have to figure out.
Would you be able to use something like an existing block would be a place where it could be placed, as opposed to a neighborhood? In other words, you have five to seven houses, tiny houses, and you could say if it's on a single block, it would be an appropriate size, something along that line, is that...
I'll consider that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments on our progress on tiny houses? If not...
Hold it down here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Couldn't see you.
I just want to thank staff for continuing to pursue it. Thank you.
If we're done on old business, I believe our next item is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?